Well, good morning. This is Knox County Commissioners, August twenty-sixth, two thousand twenty-five. We will start out with our Knox County Transit Report. And most people knows it as MOTA and CAC, but it is Knox County Transit. And we have Bethany with us to share where we are with all the great things that are going.
Yes.
So Bethany.
Thank you. Yeah. So for our transit update, I just wanted to keep you up to date on all the changes that we have initiated this summer, which we've taken on some pretty monumental steps. So um, the first thing is our routes. So we launched our our flex routes on June second. And they are doing phenomenal. They are really strong right now. Um, we had last week alone, we had three hundred forty-five trips on them. Um, so we're looking at about averaging around seventy riders a day, which is a really strong turnout. Um, our, no surprise, our Koshaknan Express is the busiest. So we are actually looking at um, switching around staff and having a big bus for that. Because we are finding that we have several times that we have all nine seats filled on those buses and probably could use more. So um, that is really good. Um, it's a good problem to have, although it does mean that we have to switch some things around and figure out staffing, what we're gonna do, and you know, the CDL drivers have to drive the CDL buses. So um, we're already three months in at the point where one of our routes needs a bigger bus.
Do you think that's because of the free or the flex route or both? Do you know what I mean? Is it a free thing?
That's a great, I, that, that plays into it.
I think so.
Um, I think that plays into it. I think also being, having the flexibility to pick people up or drop them off at their, their street. Um, yeah, there are some riders that we find they really haven't found much of a difference riding the free route versus the on-demand. Because we go right past their house anyway, so we can pick them up, drop them off. Um, that's the other kind of pinching point with the, the routes. We've been doing a lot of flexing and made it more convenient. But we only do that if we have time. So if we have more riders, we have less time to flex. So that means we might be needing to drop someone off at the end of their street and then they walk down to their house. Um, it means we need to do more transferring as well at the transfer station. So um, you know, we're looking at trying to get a shelter down there, a place to sit, a place that's protected, to make that a little bit easier and a little more comfortable for people while they wait for the other bus that's gonna go across.
So would that be like a, like in Columbus or wherever, like a stand that you get in?
Yeah.
Out of the weather?
Yeah, it's, um, we have glass there, but my complexity glass, but um, you know, and it's, it's a sheltered area that has a bench.
That's nice.
Out of the wind, out of, out of any rain, uh, shade is nice too. So.
That's nice.
Um, yeah, so that would be something that we're looking at trying to get established. Um, probably at the, at the new building is where we've had our transfers happening. So there is some, there is a little awning by the doorway that is there, you know, that we've kind of offered, but we don't have any seating over there right now. So.
Now, when you say there, uh, I think, I, I might think of three there's where our new building is going to be, where the old building is, and we're um, uh, down at the uh, senior sitters station back, because that was a transfer.
That was, that was.
So which transfer place we talked about?
So we're talking about the new building. So.
Down by Habitat.
Yes, five oh one, yes, yes. Yes. Um, that was what we established as um, the transfer location, knowing that we'll have a lobby there at some point. Um, that was the thinking is that that would be comfortable for people to be able to sit inside and have the, the bathroom there. Um, obviously, we don't have that up yet. So yeah, so we established that before we got into the building, just to get the pattern and the habit down.
Good.
Um, yeah, so that's, that's kind of the location we're looking at. We don't transfer at station break anymore. Um, we've also talked about Kroger is like kind of a nice center of a spot to have.
That's what I thought you meant, maybe something else.
Yeah.
Road where they can play.
Yeah, I, I need to get in contact with the property management at Kroger Plaza. Um, because we wouldn't want it right in the mix of things. It would might be nice to have it kind of out on the outer area. Um, but it seems to be a natural, exactly, exactly. It seems to be a very natural place. Um, that is kind of the central between the Koshaknan Avenue and getting into downtown. So those are some of the things that we're looking at. We, um, we have two routes that are performing very strong and then two others that are not being utilized as much. So we will probably be implementing changes in December um, to change, eliminate stops, kind of change where the route goes, just see where our demand is. Um, if it's not being utilized, we don't want to keep running something that's not being utilized. Um, we certainly don't have the, the extra resources to just be doing that. So we want to get as much transportation as we can out of the riders and the drivers of the buses. So we did also finally got, for part of the rebranding, we got our uh, uniforms in. So all the drivers have T-shirts. It also has their driver number on the back.
That's not the A J.
Spirit, no, no. Team spirit there, um, because we are all on the same team trying to pull our weight out in the community and provide that transportation. So um, these were, these came in. And so we will start to see drivers looking like they're drivers around town, you know?
Well, again, you guys wearing Michigan stuff, I mean.
Probably on Michigan Navy Day, we'll have that, but um, so we, we did that as well. The other big change, and this is more of an internal, um, but we, we implemented new software last month, and that has been huge. It's huge for our operations. Um, it's, there has been a lot of buildup to it. We had a lot of issues with our other uh, software. And it limited us on what we were able to do. So we're still learning. Uh, there's a lot to learn in new software always and just where to pull the reports and are we comparing apples to apples from what the old system was to what the new system was and all of our functions that way. So it, it has gone really well. Um, there have been a few bumps and we have um, worked that out with the people that have been able to communicate with us when the system has been generating odd times or something like that. So um, there really haven't been that many issues with it. So we're pretty, pretty happy with that. Um, the other thing that we love is that there is a night before call, and most people are getting a night before call now and an on-the-way call. Um, there's still.
That's like all computer.
Yes, yes, we don't have to do it. Yes, thank goodness. So that really saves us a lot of time. Uh, because my dispatchers sometimes, especially the nursing homes, we had to call every time we were on the way because they couldn't necessarily see us or, you know, they weren't out waiting. Um, so that is saving us a lot of time. Um, there are a few, you know, timing issues with some of the on-the-way. We are so close that the call gets there while they're getting on the bus. So that doesn't help, but uh, if we're only one minute away, it's really hard to kind of remedy that. So um, and then most, most of the rides are getting a night before call. So there were a few little keys to work out with that. But I mean, that, that has been something that was asked for when I started, better communication. When is my ride? When are you guys coming? I don't want to wait for a half an hour. Now you've got a call that's coming saying, we'll be there in five minutes. You know when we're coming. So it's really stepped up our customer service.
The free. Is there a time agenda for that or is it just gonna be free moving forward?
Um, since it's a pilot program, I, I'm saying.
This is your own pilot program?
Yeah, this is, we're just making this the routes for one year. So um, if there's continuing to be strong, it would be silly to do a wave of them. But I would say, yes, we can do it for the year and then we'll need to reevaluate. We need to start charging fares. Um, and we just need to see what that looks like with the budgets. Um, and it it's unknown what's gonna happen to the federal money. So.
Money.
Right, right. Or if they could ever change the rule that that doesn't get deducted from your federal money, then that changes the strategy with fares. So um, yeah, I, I don't think it would be permanent. I think eventually there will be some sort of fare for the, the routes or a pass program. Um, but for now, for the year, we're, we're gonna be fair.
How's your staffing level? It's good?
Yeah, pretty good right now. Um, it's always hard to to anticipate the demand. So we know that we drop off in the summer as well. So we've been pretty good. Um, we're ramping up though. We've got a little bit of back-to-schools already started, but Kenyon hasn't started yet. So we're gonna have to ramp up for that. Um, there's a lot of communication with um, MBMU as well. Um, they have a lot more need to get students to downtown and a lot going on downtown. So we've had several requests to see if we can help out with that. Um, so staffing is good. I could probably use another part-time driver. Um, and we still are filling a full-time dispatch position. So that's.
You're definitely good actually though.
Yeah.
Compared to when I first came here.
Yeah, well.
So because you, very. Well, I, I can remember like my first meeting with all of us and Bethany. I said, how staffing is? Staffing was not good, yeah.
Yeah, yeah. I mean, it's hard. I, I will say I would love to get the driver wages up more. Um, we did when I first came in, we made a boost. But we're already at that point where I feel like we're starting to lag the market again and that makes a difference in the candidates that you're gonna get. Certainly full-time, part-time, that makes a difference as well. But but I really would like to get it up to at least seventeen an hour for a driver. We do ask them to do customer service, loading and unloading the wheelchairs. They gotta get in and out of that in the rain, in the snow. Um, dealing with all kinds of different scenarios. You never know what you're gonna come up on. So we need good people.
And they're currently at what rate?
The starting rate is sixteen fifty an hour. Um, I only have a handful of people who are new. So most people are seventeen or over because they've been there for a raise or two. Um, but it really is between seventeen and eighteen. And these are people that have been there, have a year or two under their belts. Um, and then also the factor is the benefits, you know, what's gonna happen with, happen with the health insurance and those rates and um, retirement. I mean, we do contribute a lot, which is wonderful. But it's wonderful to support employees by contributing, but when you don't know what's going on and when you do, I do have a slight budget cut. So that just makes it really, really hard to juggle. Um, so it's, you know, it's something, it's, it is on my radar. It's something that I would love to be able to do. And I think it would help with the staffing and the retention and, you know, give people enough to be able to live on. Um, but I also just have a dollar amount budget. So you know, that's kind of, that's kind of how it goes. So um, I, I'm continuing to try to get out and get some sponsorships. We've got some advertising to try to find some funding on that level. But a lot of that really is gonna be going straight to Operation Match. So um, and you know, we would, we do have the T-shirts. It would be nice to be able to buy coats, but that's really expensive and it's really just not, we just don't have room in our budget to be, to be doing that. It's kind of an extra, but you know.
But it'd be nice, especially in the winter.
Yes, it would. In the snow, like again, they're in the rain, they're in the snow. I feel like it really is part of the job to offer some good protection from the elements.
Where are we on the wraps? We're really.
Yeah, so we are halfway through. So we have eleven done. We have eleven more that I have slated. Um, I, we have talked one of the times about not wrapping some of those really old buses. We aren't gonna, you know, something that we're gonna get rid of in the next year or maybe even the next two years. We probably don't want to spend the money on it. So that um, reduces the number of buses that we're gonna be getting wrapped. We do have two brand-new buses that came in in June and they are already wrapped. And they're out rolling. So um, it has been a little bit slower process. Um, the uh, entity that won the bid kind of he bid on a lot of different things and he didn't, uh, he admitted that he had overcommitted himself. So we were told three to five days. So at one every week and it really hasn't been happening that way. Um, so we are halfway through. You're, you are seeing more blue buses out there. Um, about half and half is what, what we're seeing. So.
And have you gone down to our new demolition site?
Yes.
So how do you think that's coming?
It's good. It's good. I wish I had brought a mask, but it's very dusty right now. But yeah, it's amazing what they can do. I mean, there was so much stuff in there and they cleared it out so quickly and um, it's starting to take shape and um, yeah, hopefully we can get through that bid process and all of that and.
Every time I walk in here, I say the same thing. Wow, it's big.
It's gonna be great. Yeah. So um, yeah, I think there'll be plenty of room and it'll be great to park the buses in there and.
Yes, then you don't have to worry about getting people out in the winter and scraping them off with all that.
And warm them up. And some of the, the doors, um, the passenger door, some of the seals kind of leak. So even when it rains, we get a puddle on the step. Um, and then some of our older vehicles, that puddle on the step has made it rust through. So we've had several vehicles that we've had to weld the steps. I mean, that's what some of the repairs are, you know, so eliminating all that would be fantastic. So we don't have puddles in there. So um, yeah, we're really excited. We are kind of just putting our head down and grinding away at some of these new changes that we've been long awaited for the community and um, we're excited about some of the good things that are going on.
Good. Oh, help uh, refresh my mind about the uh, uh, free rides. Is that just in the city of Mount Vernon that's free? Um, because I know there's some who go to the villages, Centerburg, Danville. Those are not free if you're going to Centerburg or Danville?
Right. So right now it's just the routes and the routes are only in Mount Vernon. So um, we, yeah, so right now it's the four routes that go kind of north of the river. That is fare-free. Everything else is on demand. So everything else is um, charged a fare. Now, we did reduce our fares since it gets deducted from us. It counts against us. Um, it's, it's a dollar in the city. It's three dollars if you're out by Fredericktown, Apple Valley, that kind of mileage. And then the edge of the county is now five dollars. So that came down from seven fifty and six fifty.
And if they want to set up an account so that they don't have to be in and casual to you, what's that process for a person to set up an account? Yeah, that just.
Yes. Yeah, so um, they can call in at seven four zero three nine two seven four three three. We take, we set everyone up with an account that rides and then we take our credit card over the phone. We shred all that information. We do a credit card payment and it's on their balance, what we call the balance. And actually, the new system calls it a pass. You don't actually get a pass, but we, we set people up and then their rides just get deducted automatically from that. It's very easy.
So if, the, once they set that account up, um, can they go in, log in with a computer and see how much money they have on that account?
We don't have that yet. Um, that would be, um, we'd have to look into getting the app for our new software. We probably would have to pay more for it. But then they would be able to, to log in and see their rides and see their balance and see all of that.
So now they, they just have to call and say, do I need to put more?
Yeah.
Okay.
Um, I think that the county is getting to the point where we're bidding out the new credit card soon. So we're hoping that maybe we get some good.
We could say soon, I think.
Yeah. So I um, maybe if there's some good, you know, functionality through that, where it's an online account that we can put on our website, a link. Um, that would be great. But we definitely would like to see online payments and get there. I think that's part of this project, right? So, yeah. So that's something we're looking toward. But yeah.
Anything else, Beth? No, I've got nothing. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, we'll keep, we'll keep tracking and I'll get you guys on those buses too, if you really do want to.
I do want to go.
I did want to scat you. I, I, it's been a whole other month and I still haven't gotten you.
I, I, I would like to at least go from here to Koshaknan Avenue.
You should try it. Be on the busy bus.
Yes, that's right.
Thank you.
Thank you, Beth. Appreciate it. Some Courtney's out in the hall. How often you been going out to the new building? Once a week or so?
Too much. It's dusty right now. I'll be twice. Good morning.
Morning. Good morning to you.
What are you doing today?
Good, how are you?
Great, thank you.
So we are ready. Um, for those watching, this is Courtney Lauer, who is our HR director. So you're going to give us the HR updates. And I know one of the things you're gonna talk about briefly is um, Pam set up for the uh, understanding food labels by, like, security hospital to one.
Is part of our wellness initiative. Uh, Pam, our HR coordinator for benefits and wellness, has set up a lunch and learn for staff. And we'll have uh, personnel from Knox Community Hospital here to talk through how to understand food labels. So when we're standing in the grocery store, asking what does this word mean? Hopefully they can help us walk through that process and understanding what we're getting. So, yeah, looking forward to that.
Put it in the English.
Yes. Into terms we can understand, right?
Sure, yes.
Goodness. Well, thanks so much for having me. Um, I listed for, in your report, some um, strategic engagements and events that HR will be participating in, in the coming month. And that includes the Ohio Public Risk Management Association annual training. So we are members of that association and that annual training focuses two tracks, one in human resources and one in risk management. So we um, are fortunate to be able to participate in, in that learning opportunity. Normally it's in the central Ohio area. This year they've moved it to Sharonville. So down closer to Dayton in that, in that area. Yeah. So get to see a different part of the state this year. Uh, the Job and Family Services Human Resource Association has a meeting quarterly. Uh, normally they're virtual, but there's one in-person meeting a year and that will be in September. So looking forward to connecting with our JFS HR personnel across the state at that meeting. Our next new hire orientation for the county will be in September. And then, as you know, Corse's annual meeting will be in September and I'll be going as well as Michael Percy um, to get the updates on um, Corse and any information that we need for the new year. Uh, Andrea, the safety coordinator for the county, she and I will be attending an ADA-focused training in Dublin uh, near the end of September. Really looking forward to that. Rachel Shaw is going to be presenting. She's known across the nation as kind of the go-to person when it comes to the ADA, Americans with Disabilities Act and accommodations. She's literally wrote the book on this. So uh, we're so excited to be able to participate in a training with her. And on October first, the career quest out at Mount Vernon High School will be going on. So we'll be representing Knox County and the different offices. So students can learn about the different kinds of jobs that we have available and career tracks for them. So.
That's at Fieldhouse?
It is at the Fieldhouse, yes.
And that's the one that has, you know, a couple thousand students?
Yes.
Bethany, okay.
Yes, it was, it was quite a day. So we'll be rotating in and out, the three of us up there. So we're not all standing all day long. Um, but really looking forward to that. Um, because the, you know, the kids keep us guessing and uh, and keep us guessing too. So happy to be able to be a part of that adventure. Um, at the end of this week is the CENTCO renewal meeting. So we will have our um, renewal numbers after that meeting for you.
So what time is that?
Nine, I believe. I didn't write that. I did write the time down on there, but it's a virtual meeting. So uh, able to participate virtually. Uh, PM has our county health fair set up for October second. And then open enrollment meetings for Knox County staff are being set up for October fourteenth and fifteenth. We do those um, not just here in the service center, but um, you know, but the sheriff's office would like us to come out there and do a, a meeting onsite for their staff. We will do that. So PM's working to get those set up so we can get benefit information out to all of the employees. September is Ohio Preparedness Month. And thanks to the EMA Director and Assistant Director, we've put together a, a little calendar. Uh, we're gonna be sending out information each week in September, just reminding employees in departments about.
Print the page, right?
Uh, landscape. That's what you needed, not, not portrait.
Software doesn't allow me to switch.
To switch it. Um, so each week we're gonna be asking, you know, them to just discuss with their staff some safety measures, um, departmental fire drills, even if they're tabletop exercises, so that staff understand where they need to go in the event of an emergency. So um, they can be looking forward to that information coming out each week in September. We'll also be having an onsite defensive driving course on October seventeenth at the Memorial Building. We have all new hires complete an online course within thirty days upon hire. But then we'd like to have this in-person training. It's certainly more in-depth. Um, gives you a little bit more information and we uh, encourage all new employees and those that haven't had this training for four years to attend the in-person if possible.
They bring cars with them.
They don't. No, they have a presentation that includes videos and information.
Last time I did that, cars and I failed. They won't let me back.
A simulator.
That was a real car.
It was a real car. A simulator might be one, right? Right now we are actively recruiting for um, a few positions, including eligibility referral specialists in our public assistance department and ongoing and intake caseworker with our Child Protective Services Agency. Uh, I had listed on there part-time and full-time transit specialists, but those job postings have been paused as we review the applications. I'm pretty sure um, transit is getting close to having those positions filled. Um, they still have posting up for a part-time driver. And the engineer's office is sourcing um, recruits for highway workers, mechanics. And sheriff's office still has their patrol deputies posting out. So if anyone is interested in those positions, we encourage them to go onto the county's website, click on employment opportunities and it will take you right there to the portal so they can apply online. They can also reach out to our office if they want to fill out a paper application or if they need some assistance in applying. I put some stats in there about where we're sourcing our uh, applications by and large indeed is the driver of where we get a lot of our traffic. And then the county website, Ohio Means Jobs, um, word of mouth. We don't uh, you know, sleep on the power of people talking about what a great place this is to work. Um, social media and professional association websites as well. Over the last month, we can, we uh, participated in ten interviews. We onboarded twelve employees, off-boarded seven, and we are currently monitoring twenty-four FMLA cases, which is down three from the previous um, previous year at this time. Next time I'll put in the previous month because that makes sense. What kind of questions do you have for me? Feedback?
Do you think whoever gets to the place where on the FMLAs that will have a C road?
Maybe. I don't think that it's necessarily a bad thing. People are using the FMLA, but um, um, you know, maybe.
Yeah. I just, I know that um, twenty years ago, yeah, it was one of those things that people just didn't even know existed for them. So your office has done, I think, has superior job of, of keeping this out of trouble. Because uh, before we had the HR department, the sheriff was doing his thing, the engineer was doing his thing, the otter's office was doing their thing. Everyone was doing their thing, but it wasn't necessarily the right. And there was an attorney firm standing at the front door every morning.
Hopefully not.
You know what I mean? If everybody's doing their own thing, it's like a.
Yes. So hopefully we, we brought some cohesion to that and certainly lessen the burden on the department. Yes, so hopefully we've brought some cohesion to that and uh, certainly lessen the burden on the departments. Having to go through all of that paperwork themselves, so.
Learning curve is huge if you're not doing that on a regular basis.
It is certainly a very technical law that we have to uh, to have to maneuver with certain timelines and. Um, yeah, so that's, it's a lot of work, but they're happy to do it, make sure that employees understand that that's offered to them.
Yes. So on the uh, I'm always curious about the Setco Renewal, um. That starts at nine, they don't give us our numbers though until after ten.
After the meeting, yes, yes, those will be sent to us afterwards.
Nice thing is though, we will have our uh, numbers for next year, last year I think we had a sixteen percent increase.
Um, yes, fifteen point something, yeah, yeah.
Yeah, and I know that um, from what I'm hearing rumor mill out there, everyone's wondering. Uh, what the tariffs are gonna do to the insurance companies for medicines that come in and medical supplies that come in. Uh, some insurance companies are trying to get a handle on where that may end up being. So yeah, I'm real curious as to where that, the trend and all that, it's going to be for the Knox County.
Absolutely.
We've been fortunate and uh, with uh, where we are, uh, so be curious as to where the claims are for us.
Yeah, absolutely. We will see after Friday.
Yes, yeah. Well, Courtney, I appreciate you.
Yeah, well, thank you for having me, if you needed anything in the meantime, just let me know, alright, thank you.
Only an elevator away.
Only an elevator, one flight of stairs away, have a great day.
Thank you, Courtney.
Thank you.
Okay, so we have uh. What, seven, eight or so of resolutions to go through. Uh, and then I know on a couple of them, um, Sam Philkins is supposed to be here at uh, ten forty-five. And we'll do uh, all the resolutions except for for those two. And Penny, you wanna guide us through that process?
Sure. The first resolution is to approve the updated County Risk Sharing Authority Schedule of Individuals Utilizing the Employee Dishonesty Coverage. In lieu of his surety bond, and this basically is just an update to add Connie Durbin as the Treasurer effective September first. And removing Shelley Kuhn off of the list.
Second, and those in favor say aye.
Second item is a. Change order number four from KN Excavation. And it is for the CBBG Village of Martinsburg Water System Improvement Project Phase Two. It's an increase of thirteen thousand four hundred and twenty dollars and twenty-three cents. And this is due to the adjustments of all quantities to reflect the final quantities in the install.
Motion to approve. And second, and all those favors say aye, and I do believe that may be the last payment of this. Um, cause Martinsburg is, has improved their water system and that's a good thing.
Bill needs to sign that one. We'll skip the Turk annual review resolutions for Sam to explain and go over. The next item would be the certification of collection of the liquid water and wastewater accounts. For the Knox County Auditor to place upon property taxes. Would leave the total for all those is three thousand nine hundred and sixty-three dollars and eighty-six cents.
Motion to approve. And second, and those in favor say aye. And then on that, that list, um, for the uh, delinquents, most of them have a Howard address. There's uh, one with a Mount Vernon address and two or three of them with Fladensburg addresses. Um, so there is a, a list of twenty-three people. That um, I at one point thought about reading all their names to let the community know uh, who they are. Um, but I, we're, we are done, go ahead.
Next item is School Resource Officer Contract with the Centerburg Local School District. This is for the twenty-five, twenty-six school year.
Motion to approve, and second, and those in favor say aye. And on that school contract with Centerburg, um, local schools, uh. Centerburg Local School District will be paying thirty-three thousand five hundred annually. From the Sheriff's Department takes something in the, the balance of that.
The next item is the Ohio Department of Children and Youth Grant Agreement. Between Knox County Department of Job and Family Services and the Knox County Board of Developmental Disabilities. And this is for early intervention service coordination, it's in the amount of a hundred and sixty-three thousand twenty-six dollars.
Motion for, second, and those in favor say aye. It's the all right.
Yeah, I think all three, very nice.
Yeah, it is all three, at the end, very last thing. Then we do have Sam Phillips uh, here, Sam.
Come on up, or come on down, Drew Gary said.
Good morning.
Good morning, good to see you.
Good to see you. How you doing, Sam? Things are going very well. It's a great day in Knox County, the weather's always like this, right?
It's right. Hey, so we have Sam there because we have uh, acknowledged that Knox County Tax and Senate New Council's annual review. Of an existing agreement concerning the commercial real estate property or real property. And already township receiving a tax exemption for purposes of economic development. And it's like Columbia Gas of Ohio and Nysource. And Penny said, you had all kinds of explanations, so the public will know exactly what we're talking about.
Sure.
Uh, and that a point in this has acknowledged instead of accept, so.
So there should be in there also one for.
There is.
FT Precision.
Um, they'll be handling them separately.
Okay, so we'll do one at a time, so um, as you know, the Area Development Foundation serves to. Negotiate abatements on behalf of the county and the city, um, but we also track the success of those. And then we have a meeting, the Tax Incentive Review Commission, uh, Turk. Uh, you all actually both attended that, um, and we review all the reports from the, the, the different businesses. To make sure that they're meeting their obligations. Um, Nysource at, in, in, in that meeting, you all and the township in the schools are all represented. So we need the taxing authorities, uh, Columbia Gas, Nysource, they own a fabricat, fabrication plant, easy for me to say, in Bangs. Um, and at the time of our Turk, we had not yet received their reporting. And so the recommendation was if we don't receive the reporting, then we would amend their abatement. But we did receive the reporting and they had originally promised that they would do twelve. They retained twelve employees and create two new jobs and they have forty-two employees there.
From fourteen to forty-two.
Yeah, so there, and then there, they promised in their agreement to do payroll of a hundred thousand dollars in their payrolls. Over three point seven million, so um, create a lot of really good jobs there. They even did what it was supposed to do for that, so we, we recommend. Amending the recommendation from Turk, so Turk said, if they get the stuff in, fine, but if not, we'd like to, we'd like to change their abatement. Since they can get the stuff in, we'd like to just continue their abatement as.
Did, did we send my letter or notice saying that you're about to lose your abatement, do you think that's what?
Yeah.
Heard them into action.
We sent them a letter and then we ended up having, I made some phone calls. I mean, a company as large as Columbia, um, Nysource, you know, things get, change hands a lot. And so it just was in the inbox of the wrong person, um, were sent to the wrong folks, cause their portfolio had changed. And we did not get that update, so we now have the correct contact, you know, don't worry about it anymore. Their abatement also expires in twenty twenty-seven, so we only have a couple more years left.
Okay, you say twenty-seven, I see twenty-eight on this sheet, so.
Uh, so twenty-seven is when it ends tax year, collected twenty-eight.
Yeah, good. So um, that's, and so what we're doing, are we, what's the difference between the acknowledge and accept in this case?
So you can accept the recommendation, acknowledge the recommendation, is, this is really a formality to make sure that. We're letting everybody know that they're getting informed on what, what happened.
So take a motion for that.
Motion to go, acknowledge that.
Okay, and now second, and those in favor say aye. So that will take care of Columbia Gas and now we're FT uh, Precision.
Yeah, FT Precision, we um, discussed this in the Turk. Um, meeting as well with the Wayne Township Trustees and Frederick Town Schools. Um, their abatement actually ends this year, so um, we're on the last year of it. They've been a really good company in Frederick Town for a long time, um, they more than met their requirements for real estate. Um, investment, so they've made a significant investment there and they've been a really good employer for a long time. So the township wanted to just continue their abatement for the last year, be this year.
Yeah.
Motion to, uh, acknowledge that.
And now second, and those in favor say aye. So while we have you, seems or anything else you wanna share with us about uh, what's going on in the, the ADF world and. We never, we haven't had to here since you're in your position, I believe.
Yeah, thank you, um, I'm not prepared to speak on much more than this today. But um, if you'd like, I'd be happy to put together something to come to a full, a session again.
That would be helpful for us, especially people in the community that may not know everything that uh, that you do. And Julia does out of ADF and that land bank world and.
Yeah.
I appreciate.
Well, you got three different hatchwares there.
We're, yeah, we're, we got a lot going on, but it's, it's really a blessing to be busy, cause that means that there's good things come, going on in the county. And um, I, we are fortunate to live in a county where everyone seems to work, work together and get along. Um, so as long as we keep doing that, I think we're in a great spot, the Heartland Commerce Park project is going well. We're continuing to negotiate deals on those final buildings, most of those have been sold, um, and.
Do they have those memorized as to what companies we have down there at Heartland Park?
Sure, yeah, so we have Saint Joseph's Mint, which is a private mint, so if you'd like to get silver um, for. Precious metal investing, you can get, get some from them, um, the Ohio Truck Company, which is, those Robertson Trucking. They do fabrication of truck beds in Plant Four, Airco is a company that applies a. Fireproof, uh, fire retardant on structural steel, so if you've seen big steel moving and out, they own Plant Two and the former Shellmark plant. Um, Forbay is American ISIS Static Presses, they make ISIS Static Presses, which are uh, these are manufacturing equipment. But then they also do pressing onsite for customers as well. Um, so they're in the final stages of getting up and running. Uh, we are, as you know, negotiating, finalizing a deal to move the Knox County Transit there, we're very excited about that. Habitat Humanity in the Restore or in the Engineering Building. Um, CrossFit eighteen oh eight owns a lot on the west side of the tracks, that they'll be building a new CrossFit box. And see if I missed anybody, oh, and Marked is there, Marked is a um. Especially t-shirt embroidery, screen printing company, so all your Little League t-shirts and those things, they can get there and. Um, you know, getting Knox County embroidered stuff, I'm sure they can get for you too, so.
And Experience Mount Vernon is in there with the uh, Hex Mark, right?
Correct, Experience Mount Vernon Red Space from Marked there, so, yeah, so.
Which building?
That, they're in the, um, it's off of, it's actually three fourteen Burgess Street, so it's on the north side of. You know, the property there, we call the Controls Building, but nobody else will. That's what it used to be, and then we're still doing some finalizing of the uh, common area improvements there. So if people have seen some construction there, that'll be done soon, we're, we are planting plants. A lot of people ask, like, are you planting anything, it looks kinda bare, we're planting a hundred and eighty-five trees and shrubs. Um, in October, when it's a better planting season. So, and then uh, also land bank related, eighteen East Vine, the former Mount Vernon News Building, construction's going well. Mount Vernon Azurian University will have classes in there starting next week, I believe. Um, in the lower level and the food hall will open in January or February next year. So, that's all, building, construction stuff, oh, we're building houses too on Columbus Road.
That's right.
I don't know, you ask it and I'll tell you a bunch of stuff, we got a lot of things going on.
Houses in, in that area.
Twelve houses on Columbus Road and we're assembling lots to do the next reunion of those, build more affordable housing. Um, those are all single-family owner occupied homes.
And that, some of that is in cooperation with the Habitat.
Correct, yeah, we're partnering Habitat on that project, Habitat will be, they're doing all the application process to find the buyers. We are finding the lots and the funds to get them built.
Somebody asked me, Sam, I, I probably took a lazy way out, but you, you can probably help me now. The property, uh. Six oh one Chat, Westchester, then if you turn right there, and I forget the name of the road that cuts.
Adams.
Adams, those two green spaces, are those privately owned or is that part of the Heartland?
They're, they're owned by Homeland Bank.
Okay, so it is part of the arena down there then, cause there's two green spaces right there.
Yeah, if somebody would like to buy them, I'd love to chat with them.
They actually asked me, you know, you know, what they were for, um, and I said, well, first off, I don't know. Who they are actually, uh, but I don't know, I'd just like to reach back to help them, there's two spaces.
Yeah, there's actually three lots, one on the south side of one of the roads and then two, it looks like they're joined, but there's a platted alley.
Uh, okay, yeah, I did.
But then then, I, is, we're allowed to say, and that's one of the properties to have an engine.
Yeah, we're, we're negotiating a deal with Anvets for the parcel that had been earmarked for CAT. When they were gonna build their own facility, so we're in negotiations.
And then the uh, where the Habitat is and where the new Knox County Chains of Building would be. The Stormwater area is being worked on, so that'll be getting rid of the weeds and.
Yeah.
Things and then, so that's still a process.
Correct, we, as of Monday, have a, an engineered plan for that, so we now know what we're doing, we're getting bids on, we're doing that work. Um, it's a, it's a brick aqueduct that goes up through there. Um, so it, it's probably well over a hundred years old, so sailing. We're bringing some big trucks, anticipating having some big trucks move through that way and some buses, of course, and we don't want anything to collapse, so we're gonna build it, right? But we also wanna be mindful of budget and if they ever need to dig back in there to fix something or add something, make it accessible.
So when they're doing that, I was, cause we're talking about having a handicap ramp.
Yeah.
And that one door, that, that would be part of that consideration.
Yeah, and we'll have to repave those parking spots and.
You love that, so, yeah. Good, same.
Thank you.
Appreciate it, Sam.
Yeah.
Have a wonderful day. Thank you, if there's anything I can do, and I, I can put together a, a more thorough ADF.
I, I think that would be helpful for people who are um, been wondering what all's been going on and that give you an opportunity to share that.
Yeah, I'd be happy to do that.
Good.
I'll work with Penny and Jason and get on the schedule.
Good, perfect.
Thanks so much, have a wonderful day.
Good.
Yeah.
Get your phone somewhere.
Yep. You're free.
Thank you, Sam.
Thank you.
Um, so Penny, is there anything else we need to uh, do? Finishing up things today?
Oops, sir.
Um, anything that I would, would mention real quick is that uh, we, 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 we received our OSU uh, extension. Um, newsletter and it talks about the poll, pollinator habitat area by the jail. For those people who've driven on up and go. For those people who've driven on Upper Gill Press Road and see that uh, our field is uh, staying in the field. Uh, we've made that a, a pollinator area and they, in their newsletter, they just kinda mentioned that, so. Uh, Barry, if you have anything.
I have nothing, I motion to adjourn.
Second that, and we see in the journey, everyone have a great day.